You're ready. You're ready. At six o'clock, I'll call this meeting to order. Our invocation tonight will be done by Mr. Kaczynski and our pledge of allegiance, what we've done by Mr. Wilkins. Mr. Kaczynski.
Thank you. Please join me in prayer. Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us all together tonight safely and for the matters that are before this board. Thank you for the citizens who found it necessary to attend and let us know their wishes so that we could do their will. Let us do your will, dear Lord, and conduct ourselves in a manner that shows you grace. Amen.
Amen. We stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Pledge of allegiance, please, City Clerk.
No call? You got it, sir. Commissioner Way.
Present.
Commissioner Gleason.
Present.
Commissioner Wilkins.
Present.
Commissioner Kaczynski.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Albright.
Present.
Mayor Wheeler.
Here.
Thank you.
Before we go any further, if you have telephones, please dial them, not only for the floor, but also for the audience. Okay, we've dialed four. Approval of agenda. Any changes?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if you could.
Commissioner Wilkins.
Yes, can we move 10B to 5G, please? That becomes part of the consent agenda.
10B to 5G.
Yes, sir.
And, Mr. Mayor, I have another adjustment.
Okay, Commissioner Kaczynski.
I want to take 5B, SRO agreement, out of the consent agenda, please.
All right.
10G, I guess.
Yeah, if you want to take it out of there and just move it to another item.
For discussion.
Uh, 5C, you can put it at, I guess, that's 10.
11A.
11A, please.
11A.
Let's make it 9B. All right. We also want to add 10G, which will be the Hudson Avenue Stormwater Repair. Any changes from the consent? Mr. Kaczynski, Mr. Way, any changes?
That's not a decision.
All right. We have the consent agenda. We have pulled 5B, moved it to 9B. We have added, um, the Board of Adjustment to 5G on the consent agenda. We have removed 10B and moved it to consent, and we have added 10G. Yeah, probably all of them.
Yes, sir.
All right. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent. Mr. Wilkins, has a motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. If there's no, motion carries 520.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right, sir. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in the original agenda motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. If there's no, motion carries 520. All right. That takes care of that. We're to item six, introduction, recognitions, and presentations. At this time, I will ask Mr. Wilkins and also Mr. Hicks to come up. The 21st, the whole Lions Club, we get to carry the rest of our, over there. There we have, come on down. Do you want to say anything else? That's all we have, the Lions Club. We've done that list to the Veterans Memorial Fund. The Crewhord Lions Club, we used to have members of 35 to 40 people. We're down to five. So we had some extra funds. We weren't sure exactly what to do with them. And since Command Sergeant Major Turner and Army, right? Yeah, Army Specialist. Oh, Lynnwood Hicks, we're basically two to five of us were in the military. We thought this would be very good thing to do, and we like to present a check for $850. Mr. Graziano. From the League of Municipalities, it's Mr. Graziano. At this time, we'll move to item 6B, presentation by the North Carolina League of Municipalities to the Crewhord Police Department. You'll introduce yourself and kind of tell us.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. My name is Joseph Graziano. I'm with the North Carolina League of Municipalities. I'm the Public Safety Risk Management Consultant. And what that job essentially is, is that I get the privilege of working with all local governments to include their police departments throughout our great state. The Crewhord Police Department, three years ago, went through our risk review. And our risk review is a comprehensive, basically opening of the doors to my outside party to come into a deep dive into the policies and procedures and hiring practices and everything. And I commend Crewhord initially and continuing this legacy that was set with this review is because what it does is it hears that the Crewhord Police Department here is the best practices. We do a comprehensive off-site call to review, on-site review. We interview officers. We basically, we make sure everything is as it should be. And I'm here to present to you tonight that the Crewhord Police Department has successfully completed this review for the second time. So the chief, when I contacted him about six months ago, I think a little deeper date, he was on top of it, very organized, sent me everything, and my on-site review of the department was top notch. And I can proudly say that in my travels, you guys have a very well-run and a very well-led organization. And one consistency that I'm seeing is recruitment is an issue everywhere we go. But the one thing that I'm seeing is that agencies that have minimal to no staffing shortages is because of leadership. There's not so much money anymore. All soon want to go to an organization where they feel represented by their local government and by their leadership. So I just want to commend them for the job that they're doing. The chief, you want to come on up? So, the North Carolina League of Municipalities recognizes the Crewhord Police Department for completing the law enforcement risk management review and proactively serving a community in a professional manner while taking steps to minimize the risks to the citizens and their officers. Congratulations to you.
Or y'all sit down. Mike, would you, can you get your officers? Let's get a picture of Mr. Graziano and the officers in the back and...
Y'all can count a lot of them circling around behind that group and make sure you can see my camera.
Actually, this one is stupid, man. He legit spit it.
That's all right.
I get too many pictures. Everybody see me? I got everybody in this. I got it on line. I got it all. Ready? Here we go. All right, one more here.
Thank you, sir. All right, we move to 6C, swearing in, oath of office for PD Officer Clarence Peace. Do you want me to?
Aye, Clarence Peace III.
Aye, Clarence Peace III.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
To enforce the criminal laws of this state.
To enforce the criminal laws of this state.
That I will not be influenced.
That I will not be influenced.
In any manner, on account.
In any manner, on account.
Of personal bias or prejudice.
Of personal bias or prejudice.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of my office as a police officer.
Of my office as a police officer.
With the Crewhord Police Department.
With the Crewhord Police Department.
According to the best of my skill.
According to the best of my skill.
Abilities and judgment.
Abilities and judgment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
All right. Chief Willis. We now go to 6D, recognition of Sergeant Tim Cap for receiving his general instructor certification.
Mayor Wheeler, prepared for Tim Albright, speaking with the board. A pleasure to stand before you tonight to recognize one of our police officers, uh, of any achievement. Sergeant Tim Cap recently completed the required training and rendered instructional hours during his law enforcement joint instructor certification of the North Carolina Professional Education Training and Leadership Commission. Sergeant Cap, now joining other instructors who are available, will teach law enforcement also across the state of North Carolina. Congratulations, Sergeant Cap.
All right. Move to number seven. There is no request to address. Boards will move to number eight. Public comment. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment? Now, public comment is to address the board or whatever you want to discuss with the board. We will have a, a public comment section for the development at, later in the meeting.
If you want to do public comments or later?
Okay.
Public here.
Yeah, that's kind of why we want to make sure we're on the same page. Okay. And you don't have anybody for public?
I do not.
Okay. All right. We move on now to old business, 9A, wayfinding signs. Mr. Frangos.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Mr. Frangos, Community Development Director. Tonight's item is a result of our last meeting where we made a decision to move forward with National Sign Flashes Incorporated as our choice for wayfinding consultant. NSP, for short, has forwarded us a draft contract, agreement for services, that was sent to me about the middle of last week or so, and we forwarded on to Attorney Fornick for his review. So included in your package tonight is just that, a draft agreement for services with Kevin's comments highlighted in red and some of the typos identified. Unfortunately, people don't much know agreements with, with an MRR, you've got five different times in this, in the contract, so we're going to have to fix that. But as far as the terms of the agreement that's been put forth, fixed price or the not-to-exceed price is $25,000. And that includes the services related to both design and implementation of up to four wayfinding signs around Crewhord, including, I'm sorry, design, field analysis, fabrication, and installation. The pay schedule is broken down. The first payment is what is known, that is being the initial payment of $7,500, but the second and third payments are to be determined based upon the signs that this board chooses and then the cost of fabricating those signs. So tonight's action would simply be for the board to approve the draft agreement so that we could forward it back to NSP for their reviewing of the, unless, of course, there are any questions that we can try to answer or file.
Mr. Wilkins, any questions?
No, sir.
Mr. Kaczynski.
So, this contract that we're looking at now for the wayfinding signs, it doesn't have specifics. It's just generalities. Um, and the fixed price is 20, not to exceed $25,000. So if we have a design decided on the signs, how can they design them? Why, why are we agreeing to pay them for design when they don't have a design to go by?
No, but the design is part of the services that we are paying for.
Okay.
What we don't know is the actual cost of the design choice that we make.
Okay.
Just how much that sign's going to cost us to make. That's why those other numbers are unknown.
So you'll come back to us and we'll decide which sign?
Correct.
And the designation on each sign will be decided by the board?
NSP is going to come back to us, right?
Okay.
We're going to work now with our consultants.
Okay.
Through the design process to come up with our choices. They'll price us those choices, and then we'll be able to follow through on that.
Okay.
Based on the board's decision.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem. Commissioner Gleason.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Way.
Yes, sir.
All right. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve agreement for services with National Sign Flashes, Inc., for an amount not to exceed $25,000.
So moved.
Motion is made by Commissioner Kaczynski. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If there's no, motion carries 520. Mr. Frangos, thank you for your work on this, sir.
Appreciate it. We're not done. We got more to do.
Take the appreciation as it comes.
Thank you, sir.
Don't even get it.
Producing nine words. No, was that Matt?
Yeah, we're going to do that.
Sorry.
Okay, I know you're excited. Now, yes, the consent, but before we do that, now, the two that were, the two public comments were for the development, correct?
After Mike, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I haven't skipped over that. That happens every rare once in a while. All right. We move to 9B, which is a part of the consent agenda 5B, pulled by Commissioner Kaczynski. It's pulled by Commissioner Kaczynski for school resource officer SRO agreement. Commissioner Kaczynski.
Thank you. I was extremely shocked to see this in our agenda packet today, considering the school that we're talking about, that is being part of the amendment, opened in August, and this agreement is just being now, and it says, it's effective and it begins on July 1st, 2023. City Attorney. Can, I know that this had to go from the Board of Education Attorney, I, I'm assuming the county attorney had to weigh in on this, and then it came to you? Did it come to you?
Yeah, I think, I think it came to me, maybe ten days, two weeks ago, and I'm gonna say it was, um, uncomfortable to agree with. I certainly, uh, I think I understand your concern with the House of Representatives, several of them in this school.
Yeah, so, I spoke to a board member today, and they weren't even aware that this amendment had not been done. So, um, I'm very grateful for the attorney we have, when he asked, when we ask him to get things done, he gets it done, and, and not five months later. Um, in paragraph one, on the second line, the second paragraph, that says, "This parties agree and acknowledge." That word needs to be changed to "the parties agree and acknowledge." After going through all the time that it went through, I'm shocked to find out that there's a typo in this. But if we fix that typo, I'll be okay with this, and I will agree to, um, approve the amendment.
Mr. Wilkins, any other comments?
No, sir.
All right, um, Mayor Protim. Mr. Gleason.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Way.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Kevin, you good with all that?
Yes.
Okay, all right, we will move now.
No, we need a motion.
Do we need?
Motion to approve that.
I didn't know if you want to do it now or wait, since you, till they fix the?
No, we can do it now.
With corrections.
We move to approve the amendment subject to the amendment.
So moved.
Approve the amendment.
With the amendment.
Subject to the correction.
The amendment.
The amendment allows for the article.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Gleason. Any further discussion? Not hearing any, not seeing any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, motion carries five to zero. All right. Mr. Frangos, uh, 10A Creedmore Village.
Harper, can you bring up that property? I had emailed you a PowerPoint earlier this evening. I'm sorry, okay. There, there is a PowerPoint that would accompany this. I'm gonna begin with just a little bit of background. Um, so Creedmore Village and Darren Coon specifically paid to me over five years ago. This property had been in foreclosure for many years, um, it had existed in the past as something called the Lake Glad Project. It had been previously prospected by Millbridge, um, developers, it took very many different forms. Um, but today, it's called Creedmore Village. Um, property was purchased in 2018, and we really did start talking about it back then. Um, Darren had come into my office, and we had discussed these fifty-seven or so acres, and talked about what could, uh, potentially happen out there, and its location, et cetera. Um, let's see, uh, I'm not turning it on. And then, I'm gonna. So, the property in question there is highlighted, S I P D, it's fifty-seven, one seven acres. Um, the applicant in this case is Brandon Moore, who is a registered landscape architect with the site group, and the client is Darren Coon. Darren is also the owner of the property, like I said, he bought it back in 2018 for an adequate closure. So what we're here for tonight is a public hearing. Public hearing is part of the conditional zoning process. It is just one step along the way. Uh, the property in question here is highlighted in the darker peach, and the properties surrounding it are those that were notified, um, because they are within 500 feet of the subject property on all sides. Owners were mailed first class mail notices, um, to the addresses listed for tax purposes in the Granville County Tax Service Office. Site is also posted with two onsite signs, and two notices of public hearing were published in the Buckner Creedmore News, um, October 27th, and November 3rd is when those two ads were. So this is our current official zoning map. Uh, the property again is in that rose red kind of color in the left side of your screen. It is currently within the corporate city limits, and it is currently zoned C-56 commercial. Now, the prospective zoning hopes to do more than just C-56 commercial. The conditional district is proposed as a mixed use district that allows for both residential and commercial uses. This is the site today, largely undeveloped, except for the one strip of asphalt that runs from NC Highway 56 back to the, uh, westernmost or southwesternmost property map. This is some of the details of the property, I don't know if I can go through every one of these numbers, but, um, suffice it to say, they have set aside their required use for buffer areas, they have the proposed greenway trail, they have the required minimum, or excuse, the minimum in open space in the remedy areas, and then, of course, they have their stormwater dehumidifiers to offset any runoff impacts. Um, project proposes four tracks, A, B, C, and D, as you see there. Um, A is intended for multifamily apartments, B, multifamily townhomes, single family but attached. Track C proposes acreage for commercial, and D is also for multifamily apartments.
Mr. Frangos, if you'd hold on just a minute, Mr. Wil, okay, any other questions up to this point?
I'll be glad to stop there, is there anything you'd like?
Yeah, that's what I was just kind of making a break, I think we're good, continue please.
So, more numbers, and again, you're not intended to read all of these, I just want you to know that part of our recommendation and analysis included the judgment regarding off-street parking requirements based upon usage, and open space calculations based upon the requirements of our owners. And in both of these cases, the application leads to exceed the orders. So this is just a general overview of the site, this is our conceptual master plan. So let's remember that for conditional zoning, we are only at the land use level, this is not a preliminary flat, a preliminary flat will come later. In fact, there will be very many steps that will come later, but this is the initial conceptual master plan that breaks down into four different tracks and the different uses. Um, in general, the commercial is centered around the main street, the one strip of asphalt that we saw there on the aerial, and it's intended to provide around 119,000 square feet. Now, that's assuming similar storage in that regard. Um, it also shows the multifamily apartments to the north side of the track, of those larger buildings, and then it's the townhomes lots that are on the southern side of track, and I will zoom in a little bit on, on. I know you can't see very well, but I know, I know, I know. So overall, of course, this is part of the existing conditions. Um, I told you guys very many times here before, Creedmore is not flat, everybody feels Creedmore is this nice, level, smooth, um, surface, it is not. And this property is no exception. There are significant topographical challenges, and there is indeed a stream that runs on this map, it's top to bottom, but in real life, it's kind of northwest to southeast. It's a tributary to Ledge Creek, so this tributary would flow generally to the south, uh, bottom of the page, and into the Ledge Creek basin. So that is a tributary, of course, that's been identified, and of course, is required, uh, to be protected. Um, the other lines that you see are lines of Cleveland. Yes, sir.
So four of those tracks, what does, one's going there, one belongs to Darren, you may refer to it.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't quite understand.
Four of those tracks belong to what, what's above button?
No, 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 this entire project is within Creedmore jurisdiction. So, Buckner is immediately to the north, that's where we, we ablot our, our jurisdictional boundary, but that's separate. Everything we're talking about here, Creedmore jurisdiction.
Mike, does it go clear to the Buckner property line?
Yes.
Okay.
Immediately adjacent. Uh, you might be familiar with the campground that exists there, there, that is immediately adjacent, but that is entirely within Buckner's jurisdiction.
Thank you.
Of their corporate limits. So, so this one just shows the four different tracks. A and B are on the top, C is the red, that's the commercial roughly in the middle, and B is at the bottom of the page, and that's the townhome lots. One of the important considerations of this property, and the thing that I've heard about the most, is the fear for traffic and congestion on Highway 56. At this early stage, again, we're talking about zoning, this project does not have a traffic impact analysis. It will have to have one by the time they get to the preliminary flat stage, but at this early stage, the idea is that, yes, we understand, it will have a traffic impact, and each of these red dots you see on Highway 56, again, Highway 56 runs north, south, or top to bottom on this page, and the red circles are potential site entrances from NC Highway 56 West. So they propose up to four. I think that might be just a little bit of a reach, but I'm not gonna say yes or no. The idea is that a traffic impact analysis reviewed by NC DOT will make those critical transportation decisions. NC DOT is the maintainer, quote owner, of this road, and those type of, uh, decisions regarding traffic will be theirs. The traffic impact analysis will be theirs. We, as the city of Creedmore, don't have a requirement for traffic impact analysis, they do, based on Highway 56.
Mike, hold up. Mr. Gleason.
Question. So, prior to any flats being approved or whatever, they would have to get DOT permission, how many turn lanes they need, whether they can make right turns, left turns, red lights.
Traffic signal might be allowed.
That's all up to the Department of Transportation.
Correct, and it comes at the next step of development, which would be the preliminary flat. Again, this is just a conceptual master plan, and these transportation, um, items are put forth for our consideration, but again, we are not the decision makers regarding NC 56, and where intersections may or may not be allowed, if a traffic signal would be required or not, or any other kind of widening, like you said, for the streets. The rest of the roadways here on this flat are identified, um, on the map, there are several other cross-sections, but I brought out the two, I think, uh, most important ones. The first, of course, is for the main, um, boulevard, the large collector street that runs down the middle. That is shown as a ninety-eight foot public collector street, that has a ten-foot center median, fifteen-foot travel lanes, on-street parking, and a wide ten-foot sidewalk in front of each of the commercial uses on either side of the street. That, I call that the boulevard, that's the main drag, like I already know. The other streets, um, throughout are shown to, to match our required, uh, cross-section, the sixty-foot public right-of-way with twenty-seven feet back of curb to back of curb, and that's shown in that middle illustration, that's your typical street cross-section. It does have plank strips and sidewalks on both sides. Uh, another thing I'd like to point out regarding this proposal is that certainly they do what our ordinance requires regarding stubs, where to the left side of our screen, there are three places where the streets end, and could potentially be extended as further development happens to the west. I will call out the area to the west lies in Granville County's jurisdiction, so we do border our neighbors, uh, Buckner to the north, and Granville County jurisdiction immediately to the west. This is a typical example of the townhome lots and grouping, um, for the townhome pods, they're proposing five, um, units to be attached. Uh, in this case, they are front-loaded, um, by front-loaded, I mean that the driveways, and in this case, garages, will be in the front of each of the townhomes. Uh, you'll see in this schematic that they speculate up to four automobiles can be stored on each of these townhome lots. So, front yard, twenty-six feet, side yard interior zero, but side yard on the end units at twenty feet, and then the rear yards, ten feet. So these would be typical townhome pod with five, uh, dwelling units attached.
Are those single-story?
I don't know the answer to that, um, they could be multiple-story. So this is our 2040 land use plan, and, uh, with this, I just want to point out the idea that this application does correspond to what our land use plan calls for. Um, it identifies the area as an activity note, which is symbolized by the red dotted circle, and then, um, the reddish color, or again, rose color is that commercial, serves as office, and the yellow is medium density residential. So residential and commercial uses in an activity note. So this is part of our 2040 comprehensive plan, that talks about activity centers and commercial service, as well as medium density and high density, um, residential uses that could be allowed here. One thing I know is important to this board, and a lot of people talk to me about that, existing roadway there. That's what at one time was going to be, the Creedmore Connector, and the Creedmore Connector is still on our comprehensive plan, and it is shown by this line that bypasses Highway 56 and connects fifty to fifty-six. Um, I haven't been shy about saying this, but, you know, unfortunately, DOT doesn't hold this roadway in higher esteem as we do. And in, in fact, it no longer exists on the State Transportation Improvement Plan as it had at one time back, maybe fifteen to twenty years ago. But the idea is, we want to keep the vision alive, and this application does that. It gives the main boulevard through, uh, the heart of the development, and connects to that reproperty boundary, and allows for the future connection for Creedmore bypass.
Mike.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Kaczynski.
So the Creedmore Connector, that is, from what I'm looking at here, it's picking up at Hayes Road, the purple line?
Yes.
Yeah, Hayes Road.
Mm-hmm.
Down to Brassfield Church, coming down, over fifteen goes right into fifteen.
Yep.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that was Hayes Road.
That's right, that's right, the purple, the purple on the right-handed side of the screen is the beginnings of that 56 bypass.
And from what we've known up to this point is that was put on the back burner with the DOT, but it is now being resurrected.
Okay, says the camp road.
Well, we look, we can resurrect what we want, it just doesn't mean it's gonna get done, but we can try.
Okay. Also, um, this is our sidewalks and greenways plan, as part of the 2040 comprehensive plan, and you'll notice through this site, there is an existing, I'm sorry, a proposed freeway, dotted broken green line there, and of course, this application proposes to continue that and provide that onsite amenity, um, entirely at their expense to meet our freeway, uh, plan implementation. Now, this is the part where I wanted everyone to take a deep breath, because there are about fourteen or so conditions that have been enumerated by the applicant, and we've been working our way through it, but there are still some inconsistencies, a couple of numbers that I've discovered in the plan don't quite match up to the conditions as. of numbers that I've discovered in the plan don't quite match up to the conditions as proposed, but I do want us to talk about the conditions, and I want everybody to be aware of the kind of things that we've been saying are going to be included here, but this wording doesn't have to be final, and like I've mentioned in the agenda packet, certainly we're not voting for a final decision tonight. What we want to try to do is hold a public hearing and, and become aware of the board's feelings on any of these particular conditions as we proceed through. So I'm going to go through this just, just quickly, so everyone could see them, I'm not going to ask you to read them, I'm going to summarize. Number one is just about the fact that this is a zoning process, and it precedes the subdivision preliminary flat, construction drawings, final flat, and then as well drawings, which would happen at the end. This application, and this is a crucial point, does not grant approved entitlement or imply water or wastewater allocation. I think we all know, we don't have that to give. Certainly, they would be expected to come back for allocation as they proceed through the design, but this, again, is only about zoning. CG twenty twenty-three oh-two creates a new zoning district that is unique to the board's action and these specific properties. It does not affect surrounding properties, it does not rezone anyone else's land except the applicant's land in that of Mr. Coon's, the fifty-seven point seven acres. And number four there is the item that we discussed already regarding the traffic impact analysis, the fact that all future submittals will have to be preceded by TIA that specifically addresses the potential congestion on NC fifty-six. So number five is, this is where it gets a little bit squirrely regarding the numbers. Track A, maximum of two hundred and fifty multifamily dwellings, track B, one hundred and fifty townhome units, track D, one hundred and seventy-five, for a total of five seventy-five. Those numbers differ slightly from what the planning board had reviewed and commented on, and again, differ slightly in a couple of different spots on the plan itself. So those few little details have to be nailed down. Number six, I feel, is correct about the maximum dimensions of each track, and that is just those numbers there, twelve, sixteen, fourteen, and eleven, we've broken up into four separate tracks. Seven, like I said, allows for single-family, multifamily, and commercial land uses. Eight provides a twenty-foot type-C buffer around the entire property boundary. This buffer is intended to separate and partially block visual contact, and if this can't be accomplished via natural or existing vegetation, then additional tree plantings will be added. That, again, will be taken into account later date, but the twenty feet will be reserved as a type-C, low-density buffer. Nine relates to, again, future submittals that will include existing topography and all of the potential environmental conditions regarding flood hazard areas, riparian buffers, and then all future utility and storm system components. You'll notice there isn't a single bit of infrastructure really on any of these approvals besides the roadway. We're not talking about stormwater, we're not talking about water and wastewater checkpoint points, lift stations, or, or anything else like that. And ten, Creedmore Village shall be developed with at least sixty-foot wide wideways. I've showed you the one that is ninety-eight feet with plank strips and sidewalks on both sides, so you'll see that in those cross-sections. Townhomes, number eleven, hundred and twenty units, minimum lot size is fourteen hundred square feet, minimum lot width is twenty feet, again, these are attached units, end lots could go as wide as sixty feet, if you don't want an end unit, you would also get more land around there. Those setbacks I've gone through earlier, the conditions now do allow for a rear-loaded or alley-loaded townhome, but that, of course, getting up to the developer at the town when they choose to submit their preliminary flat, how they want to go about building these townhomes, where again, it could be two, two floors, but it's usually. One key ingredient here, and I know one that, that we always think about, is maximum height. Sixty-five feet is being proposed as the maximum height of the multifamily and four stories maximum. Now, we do have a five-vehicle truck that could get a hundred foot, we have our ladder truck, so sixty-five feet from adjacent grade, I think, is certainly attainable for our fire protection standards. Subdivision amenities that were itemized in number fourteen, all about the active and passive recreation areas, set size for new series of buffers, playground for the multifamily, at least one centrally located male center, probably end up being more than one, just because it's, it's so far from one side to the other, at least one golf cart, and the ten-foot wide earthen trail, which makes up the greenway that we showed earlier on the green dotted line. This, fifteen and sixteen come from the planning board discussion regarding on-street parking, and tracks A and D are the multifamily tracks, and they wanted to be sure that, of course, there would be no on-street parking allowed, and, and that's what, what they're saying here, and that fire lanes will be marked and reserved so as to prohibit on-street parking. And then track B, which is the townhome lot, that's where they tried to, to offer up a condition regarding one side of the street parking and how no parking signs were placed on the outside of the street. Not sure how, how that's going to work well, because it's a very challenging street arrangement with very many drives, and there's not a lot of room for on-street parking anyway, but I, I think it's something that maybe could be handled by the HOA or any kind of park, the Owners Association. Having trouble, go with that. So regard to the townhome lots, again, on the lower half of the development proposal there, imagine each of those dark gray squares would have a driveway in front of it, so you will have nothing but driveways along both sides of the streets, there's really no opportunity for on-street parking. You're going to have to be in the driveway or in the garage of each of those units. Eventually, I imagine, when they get down to the tugs and bolts of this layout, they probably have a few overflow stalls, maybe at the ends of some of those pods, where you might accommodate a guest, or a recreational vehicle, or an extra car for children, that kind of thing, that might be needed. So again, this isn't a definitive layout, this is just a conceptual plan, those things would be taken into account as we get deeper into the specifics. So I'll stop here for questions, wait while that's filled up there, before I have to go through it all again. Anybody?
Commissioner Way, any questions at this time? Mr. Gleason?
Yes, Mr. Gleason.
Air protein.
Mike, he's your pointer, if you would, on the, of course, I want to see it, I don't think, but.
Barbara's going to help you. Okay, tell her what you want.
You said that the townhomes are down at the bottom, and all those there.
Right.
So in those, there's like one, two, I mean, they look like trailers, you know, like, you know, like rectangles up there. What exactly are those?
Those are the multifamily apartment structures. So those could be potentially four-story tall units that would have the multifamily housing in there.
Okay, so where exactly do the, is there, is there no single detached homes in there? Did I hear you say?
No, there are no single detached, these are single-family attached.
So this is all townhomes?
Apartments and apartments.
Mike, to be clear, is single-family detached a permitted use for the site, it's just, we expect that the proposal will be single-family attached, or are they not included?
They have not included detached at all to the proposed site.
Apartments and townhomes.
They are looking for townhomes and apartments. This is dense, urban-style development.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kaczynski.
So Mike, there's a lot of pages you got up here that is not in here, and you keep saying it's in your packet, I'm like, yeah, we don't have the possible conditions, we don't have the additional conditions, the map with the Creedmore crossing, we don't have that, and I would like to see copies of that as they are right now, because like you said, the planning board had questions, so the planning board hasn't approved this yet.
Yes, they have. Planning board made a recommendation for approval after the last.
Make a recommendation.
But they had a lot of questions.
No, the planning board spent two meetings with Creedmore Village property, they asked the questions in the first meeting, and we came back two months later with the revisions. So the planning board is satisfied with their recommendation for approval, but like I said, in the conditions here, the numbers just seem to change a little bit, there was a couple of things that I wanted to get square between the conditions and the actual master plan. So there is stuff in your agenda packet, looks.
That I've seen that.
And those are the conditions, and then, I'm not sure how well it might ever, might not have printed, but the site plan concept was included in your package as well, I just know it was super small.
Yeah.
Really hard to look at in that PDF version, so that's why I take parts out of it and blow it up.
Okay.
For you all to see.
Yeah. It's just the, the map you showed us, that showed the purple line from Hayes Road with the Creedmore, that wasn't in here.
No, I'm sorry, that's right.
That's what, yeah, that's.
That's right, that's for more comprehensive.
All right, so there's no action on this?
Correct.
Okay.
Tonight is just about the public hearing.
All right.
And hearing the applicant's presentation, and then any citizens' comments.
So in the first meeting that I went to for this, there was single-family detached homes?
I don't think so. I don't think that they were ever included in this.
Okay, all right. And the retail, and the retail spaces in the bottom where the townhomes are in that big section?
In the middle, no, no, that's a little out parcel of land that is not included in this re-zoning, but that's the commercial.
That's the commercial.
Yes.
So go down lower to that big, right there, what is that?
Those are parcels that are outside of Darren Coon's ownership. Those are privately owned parcels by Harris, it's Harris.
Kevin and Tommy Harris?
Yes, that's right, they own those two properties, they are not a part of this action.
Okay.
Because they are not owned by Mr. Coon's.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Wilkins.
I think so.
All right, not hearing anything, I guess we need to do the public hearing.
That's right, and, and if you want to hear from the applicant, sir, you can give them an opportunity, oh, I have my last page there, which just said questions, and then... One more, keep going.
Hang up yours.
Do you write one through four, one through four?
There you go.
There you go.
Okay, since applicant's presentation is next on the list there, if you'll do me a favor and identify yourself and where you live, and then the floor is yours.
Right, my name is Brandon Moore, I'm a local state architect, we're at Cypress out of Raleigh on eleven-eleven Irwin Road, and I live in Raleigh at five three two five on Wood Lane. So Mike did a great presentation, I just wanted to go back to a couple of the previous slides and elaborate a little bit and provide a little more context on the neighborhood. So quickly go back to the land use plan sheet, there's an existing land use plan, it's like a third one, or maybe back two more, one more, there you go. So the existing land use on this is commercial, and this is a very large site for a commercial development here. It's really more commercial than we would want to have as a standalone development here, it would be a very intense use to make this a standalone commercial site. And so the plan that we came up with, that Darren has came up with, is mixed use to bring residential into the area, to support the commercial, it develops in a synergistic kind of way, you know, the density from the residential supports the businesses, restaurants, offices, that type of thing. So now, it's, it's just a pot of commercial, and we go to the next slide. So what we have here is a commercial core that we kept in the center of the project, and we surrounded it with two different densities of residential. And to start this out, we have a little bit of an eye shake to the parcel because of the two independently owned, separately owned parcels in the middle, or in the, the lower southern portion. So it makes sense to offer the commercial with a lower density type of development, low density is relative to townhomes rather than apartments or commercials. So that goes on the south side of the, the commercial core, and then on the north side, as you get closer to eighty-five, you have the apartments, there's an existing apartment community just up the street, so it seems there was, it kind of makes sense from a hierarchy of density perspective. Something else that I think we should look at, probably the concept plan, go down two, three, layout, concept layout.
The other way. One more, there you go.
One more, maybe two more. There, got it. So you can see how we've got the units to back up to the parcels that are not part of the development. We think that, you know, protects those somewhat from the commercial. Because we have the split with those in the middle, and just to have, you know, public safety, to avoid traffic being collected at one spot, we thought we would have multiple points of access, there could be right-in, right-outs on some of these with a signalized intersection at the commercial. And two, it allows us to access these fingers that are at the bottom of parcel. This is a very conventional townhome layout, the outside is the property or square mostly, which lends itself to a grid, so that's, that's what we have in the concept, is a grid and network, and it's pretty, it's, it's not as dense as something you would see in, in Raleigh and St. Louis, it's a little more spread out, we have lots of open space between the banks of units on the townhomes, twenty foot, it's pretty generous, Mike was talking about parking. There could be some hidden parking on the edges of that open space if you need additional parking, I don't think you will, because we have four spaces for units proposed, but this is, it laid out very well from a grid perspective, and also with the access. One other thing I wanted to mention there was, we do have a twenty-foot buffer around everything, so there's internal lots that are owned separately, have a twenty-foot buffer around this, there's a twenty-foot buffer around the perimeter, there's a large buffer around the stream that goes to the center of the property, and we try to space open spaces throughout the neighborhood, mostly around the apartment development, because you need to have open space, you don't have backyards there, so we have amenity associated with any apartments that go there. Mike mentioned the, the parking limitations, that was one of the major issues we discussed at the planning board. They don't want to have streets being blocked up for fire access, we talked extensively about getting fire trucks to the neighborhood and not having no street parking in the apartment neighborhood. And then the last thing that I wanted to mention was the, the numbers. So we did have higher density overall, there was a larger apartment component that extended back behind the townhomes on the, the west side of the stream, it was apartments all the way down. So we changed the pod sizes, we adjusted the southwest corner to be townhomes instead of apartments, so we're looking at, you know, measuring these terms of density and acreage rather than specifically how many little boxes we can fit on the plan, because this is very early, as far as cycling this, it's very conceptual, and... And it will change, so we're giving a range with a maximum threshold. And that would be all I have. And I don't know if Darren, do you have anything to add?
Happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, the property owners here, they're tuned in. We're both available. Hey, go ahead and give any questions.
Alright, is there any, before you leave, is there any questions? Alright, thank you very much. Alright, at this time, I am going to open the floor for our public hearing. The public hearing is open. We will look at Allison. If you'll identify yourself and give your address.
Good evening, Creedmore. I'm Allison Kuecheloo. I am a six. I'm lineage, also Magnum. My question is more to do with the impact of this new development on the property around and across the street from it. And to what extent there are plans to make this area walkable. It looks very self-contained as a conceptual, but is it meant to articulate with the rest of the commercial area down the road from Creedmore? Can we foresee sidewalks being needed, widening of the road to accommodate turning and so forth? I'm just trying to conceptualize how this will look, how it would feel, how it will live down the road.
Commissioner Kaczynski. Yeah, I'll let you, I'll let you. Commissioner Kaczynski is going to respond.
Okay.
So because that's a DOT road, any sidewalks that would go in there are going to have to be approved by the DOT. It's not something we have any control over.
So you can make recommendations?
Well, we could possibly make recommendations. That's why we have these public hearings so we can listen to what you have to say. And we could, but that's a DOT decision. It's not one we have. But we've wrote it down. We got it. It's a good thing it came with that.
Thank you.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening.
I'm Toni Harris, listed on Slide 33. First and foremost, let me tell you that I am in favor of growth. But I'm in favor of my manager. And a lot of the questions that I had, that's what I was going to speak about, Mr. Agar.
Thanks.
I've had answers, but I would still like to address the former question of whether that concern is common. First and foremost, is the traffic problem on Highway 56? It is terrible. I've been married to it. And to put this many dwellers in one place, can you imagine what's going to happen? Or how, how many stoplights, stop signs or whatever you put up? There's going to be a problem with this traffic. Secondly, secondly, it's going to be extremely crowded. There's a lot of dwellings in one spot. And I know in a larger city, this happens. Secondly, I'm concerned with the water issue. Now, I'm originally from Creedmore. I love Creedmore. I grew up in Creedmore. And I know what the water problem is like. So I'd like us to keep that in mind all the time. The planning board, I did have a question, but I'm understanding you've met and I'd like to ask this in all possible minutes from the planning board that they can regard. Do you have a question concerning the conditional district? Can you get it explained with? Um, I guess that's about all in my three minutes. But just wanted to make a more aware comparison that we made that the property owners on Highway 56 on both sides of the road.
Mr. Agdafa, would you like to get up and address the board?
I did not, well, I told you guys I did not want to make a comment. I'd like to get some information. Since you allow me and I appreciate, I did not try to lose this. My name is Amor of the by Lake Road and I'm part of the Lake Road. So I'm a part of the Golden River Company. So I'm very quick, I said in the front to say something, but since you're here. It reminds me of when we had developed in Holy Creek apartment. I was in charge before it became a land. I was, I did not across the property with the planning. And it became an issue before lawyers, you know, it's not. But I think it will be okay under part of, the main thing, I'm not desolate to align them, but I make it happen. I want to make sure. Mike, uh, only for many years, I just hope if there's a way that apartment, because I've got three or five nurses applying for this appointment in Holy Creek, they're not qualified at all because we make too much money. So it's got a way that you can, it's about the same thing again, that only income that can rent those apartments. I would like, we've got too many nurses in San Antonio, they cannot apply any apartment in Creedmore. Not, uh, hardly, obviously, but that should be nice because they need apartments from all over the state. Mrs. Agdafa. Creedmore, Holy Creek, oh, later in the fall. I hope you can understand. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. It's Commissioner Gleason.
Yes, sir. Those apartments are not controlled. None of that has been discussed. This is just about land use. This is just about the idea of the density from this. We have not made any type of conditional limitation on workforce hours or affordable or anything like that.
And I know, I've allowed a little leeway here, but to remind everybody, this is a public hearing, not a question and answer session. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? That's alright. If you'd like to speak, go ahead. And I got those. I just want to get this done.
Please, Chad, uh, I'm here to see you and I am encouraged because this is a great improvement of the previous conditional zoning plan from there. I mean, I'm pushing in that direction and the applicant as well. This definitely is a plan worthy of reviewing conditional zoning. So that's good to see. This will set a precedent for the city. This will be the first conditional zoning that you will have reviewed and if you approve it, that you will have approved. So I hope you take into consideration that path and that precedent that might be set. Just a couple of things that I saw, and I know Mr. Gleason, I've actually been with him before. I like him. I think he intends to do a great job out here. So that's a personal as well. But a few things that I did want to comment on. I feel like a development of this site needs to provide a more substantial commitment to amenity. Because Creedmore is lax about amenities. And so when these residents, 600 or 520 residents, have nowhere to really recreate or in any pools or whatever, clubhouse, etc., that you typically would see, but that means residents, a lot of people, you typically see more on-site amenities so that, you know, one, the more they have to get out into the external communities, they take away from what little amenities the rest of the residents do have access to. And the other thing is that it adds traffic to the roads. You know, being that they always have to go out. And not that you want to be as healthy as she was into, but you want to provide official amenities for that new population. And I think that's something that I would like to see, you know, more committed to greater, I mean, a dog park and a one playground for the rest of the residents, you know, and maybe more, it's just not enough for the development side of my city. The traffic along this area is pretty substantial, I feel like. And again, this is conditional zoning. You guys can ask for whatever really you want. With any reason, I'm not, it's your turn to sit right there. But you guys can ask for something to be provided, for you to be able to make a decision that you feel is in the best interest of the community. A development of this site, I would have expected some type of traffic study to have been done. It may not be approved by DFT, but so that how the neighbors, how the community knows, how does this affect me? How does this affect your police and fire staff? Is DOT going to allow four entrances along this road? They might not allow it. So we show four entrances along the frontage, may not allow it. And so I know the general, DOT's general guiding factors is 4,000 daily trips, which this road peaks by far, every new entrance has to have a turn lane. That means when they find, you know, if they get into those nuts and bolts, are they going to say, okay, we're going to mix two of them because that means we pretty much have a turn lane along this whole section. So I think those things could be provided at this time. I just wanted to get a point of clear attention. Did Mike say that the commercial area is not included in the rezoning? I misunderstood you. Okay, okay. So the concept plan as a whole is the concept plan as a whole, just because it was commercial. Maybe I got hung up, I got mixed up, I guess, when you said it was, I know it was already gone commercial, but it is covered under this conditional zoning. So you have the abilities also to request conditions on commercial or anything that's there. And to get back to the sidewalks, I mean, this will be a property within the city limits of Creedmore. You make commercial people put in sidewalks, you know, Mr. John Daniel Hilfert. You required that he put in a sidewalk and it was on DOT, so you do have that way. And that was conditional zoning as well. So you do have that ability to request sidewalks as conditional on 56. And I think that would be a great condition too, because there are many people who walk from other places in Creedmore, wherever, to get to work at some of the fastest places. I pass them all the time when I'm at work. So I think that's something that you would be worthy of a conditional zoning. And then just the overall principles of this concept plan. I'm still confused because I keep saying, and I've heard Creedmore's presentation, that this is just a concept plan. I mean, I've worked in a lot of municipalities and maybe you can help me or maybe Mike can too. What sticks? I mean, because if this plan is not what sticks and they're allowed to go back, I mean, what level? I know typically you can increase parking or increase density, plus minus 10%, some types of applications. But with this type of conditional zoning, and this being one of the first ones of this site to come to the city, what sticks that you can have faith or the community and public can have faith? When you go to reviewing plans after all the public hearings are done, you go back to say, okay, well, we got to approve this because this is on conditional zoning approval. What sticks? Like what are you allowed to enforce? And maybe that's a question for Mike. I don't know how the orders made this question for you, but typically the conditional zoning map, that site plan is pretty much what has to stick in everywhere else I've worked, maybe not here. And that's why I'm going to ask, because I've heard that said several times. Well, this is a concept plan. And I know content plans change, but in general, I thought this is supposed to be the guiding factor for all future site planners to come into the city. So I want you, Mike and his staff, to say, okay, the public and commissioners approve this. It looks like this. It meets all the other dimensional criteria we approved. It's good to go. So there's no subjectivity at that time to where, I don't know if this is a big change from the original application or not. I just wanted to get some strong local firmness on that. Because I've heard that said, not just in Creedmore, but other municipalities as well, this is just a concept plan. I feel like at this stage, this plan should be what guides, that's the purpose, conditional zoning. We're going to produce a map that gives you a little bit more ability to make conditions. Well, if the map changes, the conditions might be different. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Not seeing any? Madam Plurk?
Okay. I have two letters that were sent in for the public hearing. The first is from Evelyn Suet. Evelyn writes, "I am a proud member of the Taylor Magnum family. It was the dream of my grandfather and great-grandfather to be able to own land and provide for the family. So this is a sentiment and serious issue. I hope that the family's thoughts and needs are actually considered. If there is a change, it should be done so by the family. If you sincerely look at the property's location and size, rezoning seems impractical. There are other locations further down the road that will or can fulfill the needs you are seeking. We do need progress. Using these other locations will result in the economic results you are seeking. Unfortunately, we have over 40 acres taken from my father's side of the family for the good of Creedmore. Too many black families are losing their homes and land. Sincerely, Evelyn Suet." The second letter is an opposition to rezoning letter from property holders Bob, Cheryl, and Susan Murray. We are the owners of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 affected properties. Lake Rogers is the jewel of Creedmore. And as a significant property owner for over 20 years in the area affected by this proposed project, I would like to officially state my opposition to the Creedmore Village rezoning. In that time, I've had to abide by a very strict set of rules regarding the fragility of the ecosystem around Lake Rogers. I can't remove a tree on my property without getting permission in advance due to the crucial watershed area. How much damage would be done by the complete clearing of the land in such close proximity to Lake Rogers? Why should the rules be any different now in this situation? The ecosystem around Lake Rogers is extremely fragile and needs to be protected at any cost. We have two, possibly three, families of bald eagles that use Lake Rogers as their source of food. And that is just one small example. Not to mention the light pollution alone from all the additional lighting would greatly alter the dark night sky over Lake Rogers. We currently have a noise ordinance in place for this area and it needs to be enforced more strictly. Is there any official plan for traffic control? On an individual level, the traffic, the complete loss of privacy and safety for me and my family, as well as the other homeowners in the surrounding area, are just the beginning of my concerns. These concerns should not be taken lightly. They are very valid issues. We are fully invested in this town. We want our houses, our homes, to be places of refuge and peace as we all want to be safe at home. How would we be able to sustain that? Having had the opportunity this year to travel around North Carolina and document how various small-town chambers of Congress are fighting to revitalize their Main Street businesses to make life better for both local citizens and visitors, I would like to see our local officials focus to revitalize our Main Street as well. In addition, people are craving natural recreational experiences and Creedmore is rich with those. Let us focus our efforts on preserving and maintaining these areas. Our revenues are up this year in Granville County and we can continue on this trajectory if we will simply preserve the natural resources we have. I would like to see us focus more on revitalizing our Main Street area instead of rezoning so very close to Lake Rogers and putting it in jeopardy. Please do your due diligence and learn how fragile the ecosystem around Lake Rogers truly is. I think protecting Lake Rogers should be our top priority. This rezoning will greatly jeopardize what is truly valuable to all of us citizens of Creedmore. In short, this proposed plan would greatly alter the peaceful, small-town feeling of Creedmore that we all value and love. Please stand with me and my family and vote no on the proposed rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any other comments during the public hearing? Alright, at this time, I will close the public hearing. And we will, is there anything else we need to do as far as this is concerned as far as?
Discussion.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, with the depth.
Mr. Wilkins?
Does density to development, they want to look at a second playground? If you really want to rent apartments and sell townhouses, they might want to look at a swimming pool also. That's all I have.
Commissioner Kaczynski, any?
I just wanted to go back with the comment that I made about the sidewalks in DOT. We can't, we would have to work with Butner. We can't, we would have to work with Butner to do sidewalks from this development to the restaurants and the shopping centers and everything else. It's not something we won't be willing to do, it's just that it's going to take a lot of conversation between a lot of people. I also wanted to reiterate that when the county manager came to meet with us a couple weeks back, the county is pushing with Campo to get a traffic study done on 56 from Franklinton to Butner. So we understand, we really do understand, and I wanted you to know that we knew that.
Mayor Proten.
Mr. Kins, do you have any timeline when you might return to us?
I'm Mike. I'm Darren.
Come up to the podium and identify yourself and give us your address, please.
I'm Darren Kins. I'm from Orlando, Carolina, Ken, Georgia. And so I've come up here pretty much for every meeting. Mike probably runs some office space at this time over the last five years. I come up regularly anytime he wants to meet in front of you. I was here for the two planning board meetings, asking for your questions if they might have, and my appreciation of them when they asked it, gave their stamp of approval. And I can come up here anytime, anybody has a question, just get on the road. After you do it. I can also add just a little bit, since I'm a priority, hearing some of the questions. We're not unfortunately going to be able to make everybody happy, but our goal, when the first time Mike and I sat down five years ago, was, we had an intention when we called this Creedmoor Village, was to create a sustainable location that had shops and restaurants and things that would serve not only the Creedmoor Village community, but the larger Creedmoor area as well. We would like to do this. As Shannon, you know, I have that, we have this conversation, you know, we wanted to have things that would be amenities, you know, daycares, a number of sort of commercial things that would serve, like I said, that local Creedmoor Village, as well as the community at large. One of the things we recognized early on, is that to do that, to bring those sort of commercial properties into that commercial district, we needed density. You had a question about, you know, detached single-family homes? Hasn't ever been part of a plan in part, because people have a lot of lovely detached homes with bakeries. Our feeling was, that wasn't something we could uniquely bring to the table that would benefit, and there's other land I know that's being developed around here, there's other detached single-family homes communities are coming in. Our tool was to be more of a, bring density in, offer an alternative type of housing to what's otherwise in the area, that also serves that sort of business district, which I know that that's kind of how we have to get in, if we want those kind of better commercial properties, we need to show density, that they're more likely, that they go, oh, there's, you know, higher density around, there's more people. We do want, there's a lot of conversations about sidewalks, and I get, I totally get that, I mean, look what you've done with the whole Lake Rogers area and all that, right? I mean, that's great that you can go all the way from town. I can't talk about Butner's, I do know, inside the Creedmoor Village, we want that to be very welcome. We would like for people to come in there and see this place, they can park, they can go to restaurants, the white streets, the walkable stuff, how to create this should-be-family type stuff. I do think, in terms of amenities, I'd love to have, one of the things that I think is like the state areas, the grass areas where people can come in, I would love to see, you know, concerts, come to local bands, play a little bit, things in the evenings for people to do, that was not outside the zoning noise or contritiate on, but those sort of amenities, I think, could be built in, once you've got some numbers of density, and you've got, again, a couple restaurants, daycare, things that serve the community, professional offices and all that. It's early, so I think it's kind of hard, again, I've worked on this for five years, invested in it for five years, it's hard to think about what it might actually end up being. This is very preliminary, this is just saying, maybe these areas, we can put these sorts of houses, and we've gone at least far enough to know what was in the guideline, and what Creedmoor, you know, planning board watching, that we've worked with that, what it ultimately looked like, we don't know, but we know that we still have to get approved of those, right? This doesn't give us a free grant, you just start to go building whatever we want to build. But just, again, the 40,000 foot view was for it to be a smaller community within this larger community, and then it serves the public and those very well. That's all the intention on our end. So if you have any questions you want to ask publicly in front of everybody, you can fire away, but again, I'm available at any time.
So did you have those types of amenities in your first presentation? The day, like the restaurants and all that stuff, did you have those things?
So not specifically, just because it's too early for that.
Okay. Those are just what you saw, your vision?
This is the vision, right, this is the vision, and I've talked to different members of this community about that, and again, part of that vision, and it is kind of all there's some synchronicity to this. If I can't get the density high enough, people coming in, and I just can't get those, you know, shops, businesses, doctors' offices, dentist's offices, all things, accountants, that we might like to come in and fill those commercial spaces, they need to see a certain amount of traffic and fillers, right? So, but that's kind of what I'd love to see, there's a, I can't remember, there's a couple of, the village concept is pretty popular, what's the, Brookshire is one, yeah. There's a couple, this is a kind of popular thing, because people get into that whole e-play living thing, where you can be in a small community and have a certain degree, so I think to say, this is what I want to get in, this is exactly what I want to have in there, because that still remains to be seen, once you get to that point, where it's in, okay, it's a residential, you can build out, let's get that commercial in there, deserve it. But the whole village concept on that thing, is sort of based on what, like England's fishing villages, where there was a main street in a lot of the small towns around, including Creedmoor, right? One main street in villages, which are commercials and radiating out from that, is where you get your residential, so you can live there and shop there and do all that in one location.
Okay.
Mr. Glaser.
I don't have, excuse me, I don't have any questions, at this time, other than the fact that I do think that the board in general will have a lot of questions for Mike, and you and Mike might spend a little more office time together.
No problem.
But before a conditional zoning approval would be done by this board, there are certain things that I think need to be just tweaked on that. And I am concerned about the DOT, with the traffic study be done, and we know what other egress and exit we're going to have from that facility, before we issue any conditional zoning.
Agreed. On our end, we fully understand that, you know, we get to the point where we're okay with you guys with the conditional zoning, then we can get to the point where we start talking to DOT, and we have to abide by whatever they say. They say, you get these many terminals, but you, I mean, there's no, we have no other choice, we will do that, we know that.
But our only problem is, if we issue a conditional zoning based on four streets, and then DOT says you can only have two, I don't know how we get out of that.
My understanding, and my preference, is I'd have to go back to you, and we have to have, because we have other conditions there, and you would have to accept. We would have to come back to that, yes.
We'd have to see the study before we could do that. Commissioner Way.
I'm very familiar with the concept. I worked for 13 years at, for Kane Realty Corporation at North Hills.
Yep.
So I'm very familiar with the mixed-use, residential above commercial, that type of thing. My counterpart down here, Commissioner Wilkins, said, more room for a playground, or, you know, a swimming pool, or something like that.
Splash pad.
Splash pad. I've been wanting a splash pad, if you haven't heard. Have you, have you thought about doing residential or office space above your commercial to maybe shrink your footprint from a building or two, to add more space for more amenities?
Well, yes, we've built in the flexibility you're talking about.
Yes, sir.
And we've got a line there that Mike has drawn into the plan, so in case, and that's kind of like, we'll get that on, we can kind of watch what we're there, so, and the idea of having like, you know, retail shopping on the main level, and a sort of professional office a step above, and maybe then residential above that, would be ideal, I would love that, I love garden terrace on the top level, you know, that one, yes, if we can get to that, I would.
I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, and then in terms of the amenities, you know, Brandon and I talked about that earlier on, you know, warehouses are great upfront, when people are marketing, and then you probably, they just don't get used very often, same with, but what I, and I don't know, this may be the opposite of what you want to hear, so it's my, you know, come and sit down, but, you know, I really feel like, if there were ways where this works, where I'd rather have some people from Creedmoor Village use some of the facilities and improve the facility to Creedmoor. I know you already have improved, we had one of the meetings down at the new community center, which was fantastic, was a great center. I would much rather, rather than trying to fraction off, people going to different places, is see, hey, is there something that makes sense to improve with what the facility Creedmoor already has? And there's some synchronicity with that. But totally, the idea of like, say, a stage where I know that even downtown Raleigh, where they've done the outdoor amphitheater type stages, not a big concert stage, but where during the day, people and families come, it's a grassy area, it's part of your open space, absolutely, when we get that stage, I would love to have that, yes. Any other questions? I'm going, you know, that kind of brings up the whole thing too. I think on the plan, this was called, back when I was first talking with Mike, this was called Gateway Business District? Do you remember that, Mike? Can you go back five years to the old term? So that was, and that's where I think the location, that was when they decided to move out the location, because it's the entry into Creedmoor, right? You come up H5, it's the first thing when you go to Butner, Creedmoor line, and it was meant to be, hey, welcome to Creedmoor, a little bit of a, something there of significance, and, wow, this is nice, without putting everybody into downtown Creedmoor, unless they want to go down there, right? You're just close to 85, the people who are, you know, there's a pretty good percentage of people who don't work in Creedmoor, who live here, if they love it. That all sort of goes well to this location, in my opinion, that you're right on that, you're right up the highway and all that, so, which is circumback, if you have those amenities, you may pull people from other areas with this momentum, they come in and go, hey, I like doing that Creedmoor Village, because they've got some of that stuff, which I think is a benefit to the entire community here, so.
I mean, I agree. One of the problems that we have in this community is housing such as this, for the people that work at Central Regional Hospital, and the federal prison.
Prison, yep.
They commute back and forth, kind of like I commute to Raleigh every day to go to work. It's one of those things that growth is good, as many people said, when it's controlled.
Right.
But one of the best things we have to do is we have to figure out how the traffic's going to impact, and we don't know that until DOT gets with you to do the study.
Right.
But, I mean, the people in the community definitely love places where they can walk out of the residence and be able to go to a sandwich shop and sit down and eat without having to drive anywhere, or have someplace where they can go and have a green space to hang out. And I, I mean, it's a great concept.
Yeah.
It's just some fine tuning, of course, that we need to just work out.
And it will be, and I mean, I have no, you know, no fault, I think this isn't an iterative process from here, right? I mean, this is just the stage, and then we work with the community to say, here's what we're, I mean, this won't be built, as you all know, this will not be built in a year. This will be more than years and days of doing it and staying in contact, you know, just listening to what's commercial stuff coming in there, will serve the community. Again, I want it to be a village concept for people, I mean, I want to live there, so, you know, I want one of those garden terrace apartments, so.
Hey, one of the good things, also being on the fire department, we have a nice new ladder truck.
Well, that was one of the big things.
Where we plan to head.
Yeah, thank you, that was one of the big things that came up, and we really had to talk about, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir, we appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, at this time, we will move to item 10C, financial report. Mr. Fang.
Good evening, Mayor's Board. Tonight, I bring you the financial summary report for November 10th. Thanks for that, as the previous financial summary report, when you look at your revenues, they're standing at 46% in collective, they are about being $2,685,867.6%. Items sort of plant there, sales of services, lines, activities that have been budgeted, total tax percentage of 112%. Of course, you know, that includes the sale of the property and other items, it goes with vehicles as well. That's in earnings, they are standing at 67%, which is great, they're projecting the $200,000 surplus and gap line as well. If you go down to your general fund expenditures, you see 40% expense, thus far, at about So more revenue is at 36% collective, so expenditures at 18%. Power bill, we have 52% revenue collected, and showing the first allocation of power bill, that we received, we have 52% here in December, January, power bill expenditures at 8%. I looked at a lot of the power bills, and I don't have a knowledge here, but I want to express to you all, later, you might have seen the email a couple weeks ago, where Creedmoor population has went over $5,000, so therefore, the normal new allocation is going down to 10 instead of some of 20 allocations, now you can only have up to some of 10 allocations. So I will be working along with Mike and Steve, probably worse, because there's an amount that we have an asset, we have to spend that, and go a time to that, I just wanted to express that to you all, but. One quick thing to update you on, the F23 audit is complete, it's at the 1031 deadline, and uploaded to the LGC. It's a great work, it's a sharp detail, about the other day, the, we plan to be at December 5th meeting to do the presentation, audit presentation, and therefore, it'll be in depth, overview of the F23 audit. That's all that I had for the October financial summary. If you have any questions, we can react.
Commissioner Kaczynski.
So when do we find out if the LGC approves our audit?
Basically, not long, typically, probably two, they send their approval through the email.
Okay.
It's not a lengthy process, they make it for acceptance.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, I think we will move now to budget amendment number three.
All right. Budget amendment number three is, this amendment appropriates our general fund by the Burgo Street Utility Relocation Project in the amount of $264,000. In that, we added a 10% contingency, just in case there are any additional costs that may arise throughout this project, that contingency being $26,400, so bringing that total to $290,400. This amendment also appropriates funds from the government, two police vehicles to Van Galloway Community College, which we sold for $17,000, $17,000. The chief is going to come up later and present the reason for the use of those, so the this amendment is just that, that accounting is placed for that, because the funding has to be set in place for the agreement and voting in the assembly. So that's all that is in this amendment. I have another one that, I'll make on the road, it's down the agenda, I'll come back to you.
All right, so we need to hear from the chief.
No, you can approve this amendment, and the chief department will come and do this for it, at item 10F.
This will do, will amend, will adopt the budget amendment to appropriate funds for two separate expenditure expenditures that were asked.
Right, I just wasn't sure if we needed to hear the chief's part first, before we okay everything, okay. All right, all right.
If not, what's the 17, so somebody just for the portion of what is needed for the present, same you make.
Got you. Any questions? Commissioner Kaczynski.
Don't we have to approve these two projects before we approve the money?
You have to have funding in place before you can order any contract or any purchase.
Because we haven't even had the presentation on it yet.
Well, that's what I was.
Not from the chief, I'm talking about what's in the Not the chief, I'm talking about Clifton and Furbow. That's what this is. This is Clifton and Furbow.
No.
Just Furbow.
Just Clifton.
There are several ones on Clifton that we.
And we have had.
Well, then I'm on the wrong page, cause that's the Furbow Street relocation.
So do we need to wait till we get to that?
You could, you could do it either way, but you're gonna, you're gonna have to have these funds allocated before you can award the contracts. That's what you're talking about.
I was on my forty-nine. My forty-nine is Furbow Street Utility Relocation.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Kaczynski, you.
Nope.
Where you need to be.
Nope, but that's okay.
Let me move on and I'll come back.
Okay.
Any questions down at this end? Mayor Pro Ten. Commissioner, Commissioner Kaczynski, I'm back again.
What I'm saying is we haven't had the presentation with the new amount of money on the Furbow Street allocation, relocation yet. So how can we approve an amendment when we haven't had the presentation?
The amendment just approves the allocation of funds if the contract, you have to have money available before you enter into a contract that obliges the city.
And to make you feel that if, if it comes down to the point and you don't award that contract, a living is often to be done and reverse those funds back to the right appropriation.
It just seems backwards.
It, it, I'm gonna say it's backwards, but.
Let's talk about it first and say, okay, okay, let's put that money there.
There's been situations in the past where the board didn't want to take action on awarding contracts until the money was allocated. So this item has to be the first step. You could get both pieces of this. You could get the budget he just presented and the presentation, but the, but the moving of the funds has to be done before you award the contract.
General, that's the thing that we gotta have those funds.
All right.
So just to make sure I'm clear, we need a motion to approve the budget. Okay.
So.
Yep. All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Wilkins to approve budget amendment number three, FY twenty-four. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries.
I get it.
Okay. That was number three.
We better move into certain.
All right. Um, ten E is it award for Furbow Street Utility Relocation Project? Mr. Barclay, I believe that is you.
Yes, I think the mayor members of the board, I'm calling to the engineer. So before I present the bids on the, uh, Furbow Street Utility Relocation Project, I'd like to start with a brief recap of the event. So this project was first advertised in July of this year, and we received no bids the first minute it was advertised. We immediately re-advertised it, and we received one bid from Pipeline Utilities Incorporated. And comparing that to the engineer's estimate, it appeared to be unlistically high, three oh eight thousand versus one hundred and forty-four thousand. It was formally denied by this board on September fifth. We add so the third time, in the increased visibility, we created an account with Beacon BID, a municipal e-commerce platform to give a wide visibility and move company. And the city staff, we both reached out directly to, uh, general contractors that were qualified for this type of work. And we contacted approximately ten, uh, general contractors. All that work yielded two bids. It reached the middle from Pipeline Utilities, where the new, uh, new bid dropped by three and a half percent to two hundred and ninety-eight thousand. And Moffett Pipe Incorporated, a bid of two hundred and sixty-five thousand. They're both still well above the engineer's estimate of one forty-four. So in discussing booting design engineers, uh, Mr. Dave Malaukis, to get his input on what he thought of the situation. And he pointed out the estimate was developed one and a half years ago, so some increase, you know, wasn't expected. But the main increase is related to difficulty in getting bidders, and that is the current climate of this type of work. Contractors are busy. They have work. We asked several of them, do you want to bid or why didn't you bid? And we got the, the same answer back. They had enough work lined up. Their resources were committed. Uh, so then we asked Dave Malaukis, well, what does he recommend based on the, the situation? And to summarize this in your agenda package, he told us that he believes the two bids are relatively competitive. That Moffett Pipe is highly qualified for this type of work, he's familiar with their work and other municipalities. And he agreed with several contractors, certainly two that he committed this time. And he didn't think that there's any reason for us, for us to believe that re-advertising would yield any different results in the future. Therefore, he said, if the city can afford the price, he recommends accepting the bid from Moffett Pipe and proceeding with the construction of this project. And that can concurs with that recommendation. Any questions regarding this project?
Commissioner Way, any questions? Commissioner Gleason?
No, sir.
Mayor Pro Ten. Commissioner Kaczynski. You're not ready or you don't want to?
I'm not going to ask a question. I'm just gonna go with the flow.
Hey, Commissioner Wilkins.
Let's get it done. If you accept the motion, I'll make that motion when we're ready.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Wilkins has made a motion to approve contract award to Moffett Pipe Inc. In the amount of two hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. All right. Let's see. That's Commissioner Wilkins. Any further discussion? Not seeing any. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries five to zero. Mr. Barclay, thank you, sir, for the work you've done on this. Um, I, I know you and Mr. Frangos have really been dragged out. Appreciate your dedication. Okay, that was approved. Um, let's see, replacement of base station for CPD dispatch. For your Chief Willie, Willis.
Mayor members of the board, um, in the fiscal year twenty-four budget, the board approved the police department's upgraded current dispatch equipment to better enhance the CPD and dispatch and CAD system. After the new figure began, I participated in contract call represented by Motorola to confirm the equipment for F three. After that call, I sent a quote for the equipment, uh, talked about in the meeting, and subsequently ordered, uh, that equipment on July twenty-four, twenty twenty-three. Approximately two weeks ago, the new equipment arrived at the police department. I immediately reached out to Motorola to schedule the installation. During that call, I was asked the model and serial number of the current base station dispatch. Once that information was provided to Motorola representatives, I was informed that our current base station would not support the upgrade of the new system. Furthermore, Motorola, we will provide a service to repair to our current base station, and it will come off fleet on January first, twenty twenty-five. Out of this afternoon, the updated arrival time for a new base station is anywhere between six, eight months from when the order is placed. Um, I think that maybe a picture of the current.
So it's not down.
It's not down. But the current base station that we have, in the PD now, if it's not, it's not compatible, um, to what is needed to upgrade, uh, complete upgrades to do, um, equipment that we have, um. I've asked, uh, that model has been around early ninety, I believe. What do you make of more?
Yes, sir. That's, that's the first edition of the Motorola.
You told us to not.
It's been around since I was.
I'm requesting the board to approve the use of my name from the telegraph.
Two different things. Two different things.
Commissioner Wilkins, any questions?
No, sir. I say we move ahead and replace the, you know, all equipment. I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase and installation of Motorola APX consulate and the CDC dispatch center.
Commissioner Kaczynski, any questions?
I don't know. Is discussion over?
Nope, we're having discussion.
No discussion.
I'll recognize Commissioner Wilkins after we finish discussion. Mayor Pro Ten. Commissioner Way, everything we need now. All right. Commissioner Wilkins has made a motion to approve the purchase and installation of a Motorola APX consulate in the CPD dispatch center. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries five to zero.
It'll be here by summer.
And installed by next winter?
Yeah. There you go.
All right. Now we move on to item ten G, Clifton Avenue Stormwater Repair. Mr. Barclay and Mr. Frango, sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Turner.
Uh, I'm gonna make some opening comments on this call before you come up. Uh, first, I'd like to apologize for the board. We had this on the agenda last week, and because we didn't receive this quote in time to meet our deadline to the board, we wasn't sure we were gonna get this quote, so we pulled it from the agenda. Today, we received that quote last minute, and to save some time, avoid, uh, enter, uh, causing any more problems and confusion with the owners. Mr. Conway, who's been very patient with us, uh, we'd like to get approval on this project as well. Uh, having said that, um, you guys recall back in October of last year, we had to do some ramjack work to some property there. Uh, this work was done about December. It was finished up. Uh, we began trying to get some work done, the construction layout, uh, how, what was going to be required for the project. We got a couple of estimates for A B scenario. One was about seventy-three, five, and the other one was a hundred and seven thousand. This two we put out for bid and didn't get a bid on. We put it out several times, and this is the very first bid that we've received on. Actually, we received two on this one. Uh, one for a hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars, and another one from Mr. Chris Milco, who's been working this project. He's been doing some video of this project. It come in on a bid of ninety thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars. So I'm gonna stop right there and ask, uh, Mr. Barclay if he will step up and address more details of the project.
Evening, mayor members of the board. I'm calling to the city engineer. And just a brief recap of the event. So this project was advertised in July of this year, and basically the advertising stayed open for about two months or so. And, uh, staff contacted general contractor, seven dollars, we filed by this time, and what we didn't require the same company utility certification and other projects. We reached out to quite a few, about at least ten. Only three of them requested a set of plans to look at. And one of those returned a plan and said, you know, nice project, but you know, nothing's up going on. So two bids were received, um, after all those folks had been contacted. So Moffett Pipe Incorporated, they initially bid for a hundred and seventeen thousand, and Chris Milco committed a bid for a profit of ninety dollars. Now both of them are higher than the engineer's estimate of seventy-three, five, sixty. Uh, I want to remind you that Chris Milco was involved with the initial excavation and exploration of the project, uh, before I started working for the city. And he also returned to the project site, uh, a month or so ago to do a video inspection of the drainage structures, the pipes and the boxes to reduce the unknowns. There's several unknowns that were in the, uh, in the plans, as far as maybe, um, possibly in the plans that he was going to exactly what he was bidding on to give us and him a proper bid. So he came in and he discussed the results of his investigation with the city manager and me, and he showed us the video. And he discovered some damage of a pipe that we weren't aware of, and instead of replacing it, he had proposed a method for repairing that section. He also confirmed that the, the box is a big shake, and there's no reason to replace the pipe that was out there that was in big condition that we had to. So he did some, uh, remodeling for us also. So because he did the extra work and actually knows what's going on more so than the design this year, we do believe that he intended actively reflect the structural work that's necessary to successfully complete the project. Uh, therefore, staff recommended that we deal with that bid from Chris Milco LLC, and have to move forward with the construction of the Clifton Avenue project. Any questions, Rick?
Mayor Pro Ten.
No.
Commissioner Kaczynski. Commissioner Wilkins.
No, sir.
Commissioner Gleason.
No, sir.
Commissioner Way. All right. Got it. Did you have anything?
No, just this is a two-part action like.
Right, right. Um, okay. Um, based on what we're looking there, the recommendation of the city is to approve, uh, budget amendment number four, which is appropriating stormwater fund balance for the two, seven, six, six, Clifton area Avenue Stormwater Project in the amount of ninety thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars, with an additional ten percent contingency fee of nine thousand and fourteen dollars totaling ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight. Okay. Any questions? All right. Entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the budget amendment.
Number four.
Number four.
All right. Motion's made by Commissioner Gleason. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion is approved, five to zero.
Make a motion that we approve the bid from Chris Milco LLC.
All right. Any discussion? Motion to approve awarding the contract to Chris Milco LLC, made by Commissioner Gleason. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries five to zero. I am so glad that.
Thank you, thank you.
Projects are taken care of. Mr. Frangos, Mr. Barclay, again, thank you for your hard work, Mr. Frangos especially. We've all worked on this thing a long time.
Not as well as the Furbow line. And I'll be glad when that one gets.
All right. Um, I think that covers us down to city manager's report.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Ten and board of commissioners, uh, there's a couple of things I'd like to bring your attention this evening. On October the first, twenty twenty-three, the city received a check from DOT in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars as partial reimbursement for the fifty-seven oh seven L or landscaping project. The remaining balance is to be estimated at nineteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-three dollars, and is expected in early twenty twenty-four from DOT once the one-year timeframe is closed. There's also been no response to date from the U S Department of Transportation regarding the three hundred and twenty thousand dollar grant request submitted August fourteenth. It's a little bit past due what we was expecting, but that was for the sidewalk improvements that the board previously had prioritized and given to staff. Following a recent safety concern for city and county staff working at Crevemore Community Center, two panic buttons or silent alarm type devices have been ordered and will be installed at the main entry desk for both the community center and senior services in the event of an emergency. If activated, they will notify Crevemore PD Dispatch, and PD can respond immediately. Public, uh, Parks and Recreation Director update, to allow a smooth transition, Ms. Angie Perry was appointed the interim Parks and Rec Director. Angie, raise your hand back there. Thank you so much for stepping up and doing that for us, Angie. Um, that appointment was made October the seventeenth, a couple of weeks before Chris left, so we could, uh, have a smooth transition as he left. The city has received forty-four applications for the Parks and Work Director position during the months of October. Five applicants were selected and interviewed by the city manager, Chris Horgan, and Camille Lockley, HR Director. Uh, the offer was made last week and was accepted this morning. The applicant has begun the security process, fingerprinting, background checks and, and the likes. As soon as all that passes, and we'll have a start date, which may be a couple of weeks out. The City of Crevemore's twenty twenty-four Annual Strategic Planning Workshop has been scheduled for February, or the tenth, twenty twenty-four. That's on the new calendar that was also approved tonight. Any input from the board, mayor, regarding the agenda, format, topics, speakers, et cetera, would be greatly appreciated. If you would, uh, pass any comments you have on, I'd like to include those in our planning process.
Which one? Andy Hoyle or Lloyd Mitchell?
I, I think I mentioned it very.
You did. Hey, it's all, it's all.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question under the, uh, Community Development monthly report. If that's, uh, okay for now.
Yeah, I mean, is that where you're at?
Uh, I can stop right here.
Let him get to his end, and then we'll do questions.
I just have a couple of more items. John R. Arnold with NCDOT Division Five has informed me that the city should be receiving an invoice for the work performed on Elm Street and the Crevemore Fire Department apron in the next several weeks. Uh, Chief Willis and I met with the Crevemore Postmaster, Brian Edwards, to request the curbside UPS drop in front of the post office, or UPS, I'd rather, in front of the post office to be rotated a hundred and eighty degrees so that disabled and handicap patrons can drop outgoing mail without exiting their vehicle. Subject to the board's, uh, questions, that concludes my comments.
Commissioner Wilkins.
Yes, sir. Under paragraph four, Mr. City Manager of the Community Development, uh, Mr. Frangos, if I may, ask you a couple of questions? Thank you. So Bram's Crossing is really gonna happen?
Yeah.
Very good. Um, Urban Designs, on behalf of LGI Homes, can you explain to me what? Urban Designs, on behalf of LGI Homes, can you explain to me what a general rezoning is and what the difference is?
Yeah. A general rezoning is to the district that is identified in our Creedmore District. It is a basic district that allows things like single-family residential, for instance. A conditional zoning is a new, unique district, similar to what we saw here tonight with Creedmore Village, that applies multiple standards that are not all listed in the plan.
Does it also mean we have no purview of the design before general statute?
No, that's not true. General rezoning includes all of the standards as imposed by the CDO. It is nothing that is outside of the ordinance, it's all already pre-stated and included.
So we can still negotiate the conditions?
No. That's the difference. That's the difference. The general district does not allow.
So whatever they present, whatever they present, that's what it is. Of course, you still have to approve it.
No, no, no. Let's not get too confused. What they present right now is simply an application for a general rezoning.
On a general code, generic code though, isn't it? It's a generic code.
It's generic code.
And again, we have no purview.
Correct.
So we can't protect the neighbors, whatever they present is what they get.
Well, I think we have to be careful here. So a general use of rezoning would not typically include the kind of conceptual site plan. Using as sterile of an explanation as I can, you might have a piece of property that's zoned agriculture, right, that's used primarily for agricultural use. That's one of the default zoning districts that, you know, the town of Tarheel has in their unified development. Another default zoning district might be, you know, a single-family residential district or like an R four, you can get one house or one dwelling unit per forty thousand square feet. And each zoning district would have all sorts of different dimensional standards that apply and kind of a default within this district, which we've got certain setbacks, a lot with some of the, this is a potential, a general use of rezoning, a rezoning without any of these conceptual site plans from agricultural to R four. And then the property owner would then have to come back later on and present a site plan that shows, and that would be an administrative review process, or it wouldn't come back to this point, it would go to the city staff and that site plan would show proposed development and whatever the proposing has to comply with all of those default standards that are outlined in the unified development. As compared to a conditional zoning, like we've seen a few of recently, where an applicant can propose their own kind of custom, you know, lot width and density and street fromage requirements, those sorts of things. And we can, or board can negotiate with the applicant and say, well, we think that you need, you know, we want to see less density or if you're going to have more density, we want to see more density, that sort of thing.
We can't do that.
And for a conditional zoning.
No, general. We can't do it for general.
Not either.
So again, whatever they present, that's it. If we, well, no, if we pass it, I got you.
But they're not going to be presenting like a site plan and it's not going to be, probably unlikely anyone, a site plan is going to come before you in a general use of rezoning, they're going to say our property is zoned for agricultural use right now, move like the rezonics so they can potentially redevelop for, you know, single-family residential use with minimum lines, you know, whatever the dimensional requirements in the hypothetical form, or is it a district? Then the developer would have to come back later on with a site plan that meets all of those dimensional requirements. But I think, I don't think it's fair to say that that the proposed hypothetical development doesn't protect adjacent properties because the standards in the CDO in this case are intended to help protect adjacent properties, the required buffers, you know, they limit density and those sorts of things. It's just you all or the board commissioners has already established the standards in the past in the CDO.
I see it as a go-around, as I see it. I'm being plain and frank. I don't think anybody's going to be protected if it ever passes this board. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
While he's up there.
Wait a minute, it's in front of us.
Come on, Mr. Mike, come on back.
Wait a second. Commissioner Wilkins, is that all you have?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Kaczynski.
Um, so like you just said that Bram's is going to, the construction of Bram's Crossing will start in this fall, this is fall. Any idea when? Because his salesperson lives next door to me. They have no plans on sales at all. They had them for September. There's no notification of sales. So do we have a date?
He told me by the end of this month, meaning November, they would begin to move. What I heard from Joshua Spiegel was that they are arranging with their contractor specific details of their arrangement, the money, and once they agree on the money, the contractor will vote. They plan to do that by the end of November.
And the other question, which is to follow up to Commissioner Wilkins's, and I saw it tonight in the diagram, how do we change the minimums on our UDO?
Text amendment. Text amendment, public hearing, et cetera.
Okay. Because the one thing I know I definitely want to get changed is the minimum on the width of the street. And I know that's set by statute, but we don't have to agree to minimums.
Correct. It's not set by statute, it's set by ordinance.
Oh, okay.
It's a city of Creedmore ordinance, that is our version. We have a sixty-foot minimum right-of-way, which is larger than is normal, but we require the pavement width something twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Back-to-back.
Okay.
Or you can say twenty-five front-to-front, however you go about it. That's our pavement width, but the city controls that standard.
So how do we get that started? And how do we, we just tell you we want to consider it, talk about it?
The board wishes to go about widening the paved area of the right-of-way, we can do that, yes. It's, again, it's in our CDO.
Right. The reason I'm saying is our roads are twenty-six and if two cars are going down that street and one of them is just over just a little bit, one of them has to pull, they can't pass each other. It's, the minimum is too low, the allowable minimum is too low and it's just not feasible. I mean, we can't paint a center line on the road so that when I'm walking on the left-hand side, a car's just not on that side of the road. I know you're supposed to drive on the right, but they, there's no lines, you know, they'd go wherever they want. And that really does frighten me. And I just, you know, living in Creedmoor and living in some of these subdivisions with some of the issues, you don't know them until you live in those neighborhoods. Golden Pond has some issues that Commissioner Gleason has come across from living in there and Davenport too, I'm assuming. But that's what I just wanted to know.
All right. Any other questions down at that end for the city manager that turns into Mr. Frangos? Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, let's see. That was manager's report. Okay, Seguassa reps. I don't know who's going to present their report, but please do.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, earlier this week, I sent you, or forwarded you, the executive director's report for your review. Anyone has any questions about that, I'll be happy to get with Director Troyer or set up a call for us to discuss with him. That is the first director's report he's had a chance to do in the last few months. And the last Seguassa meeting we were at, I actually brought that up to him as we needed to make sure we were getting updated on the things that were going on. I understand that he was busy filling multiple roles as they've had multiple senior staff members that were either out or still waiting to fill those vacancies. Anyone have any questions about Seguassa?
I mean, there is, and I don't have this question, but there has been a lot of discussion on social media about the cost of the water. And I know that that has been addressed many, many times. Has there been any changes? I know Commissioner Kaczynski was involved with fee changes.
Commissioner Kaczynski was in charge, or not in charge, but she was part of the Finance Committee who came up with the new pay rates, which lowered the minimum as far as what was required for the fees based, as in everybody got charged for two thousand gallons, whether you used two thousand gallons or not, which really wasn't fair to, you know, someone in a one or two family household. And that has changed. Some people I've heard their water bill went up for some reason, some people have said their water bill went down. I have a house with five people in it, my water bill's about the same as it's always been. So.
Okay, that's just like I said, it's one of those things. Commissioner Gleason.
I want to take the chance to get written out off tomorrow, but I've been connected to Seguassa for years and over the past three or four years, my bill has stayed consistent within five to six dollars a month. So I don't know. So many people went from one hundred dollars a month to a hundred and ninety dollars a month. Something going on aside from the water price going up, because the water price, like I said, has pretty much stayed consistent.
Yeah, I agree. Mine went up a little bit because I had three grandchildren, three, because I had them off, so it was more usage, but otherwise, mine's pretty consistent.
And I'd like to say that something I hear a lot about is we have a water filter at my house. I have quit using that and gone to Creedmore Water and have not had one bit of problem with it. Taste fine.
Where do you get the rainwater from?
Stop. Seguassa.
Oh, when you say going, because there used to be Creedmore Water, so you're lying to the other side.
If it's coming in through Creedmore lines, or it used to be, it's Creedmore Water. You got connections. Yeah. All right. Commissioners report, let's start with the Mayor Pro Tem today.
I have had a kind of a lull in my attendance for things. I guess in October, I went to the Granville Greenways meeting. That was the first one we've had since last July. So I guess they said if we don't have really anything pressing or, and things are in motion, then we don't meet. So that was the thing, so we introduced ourselves and got to meet each other because there was a couple of people that were new and a couple of people that were, you know, just there, so. Santa Claus was there, he asked how the mayor had been and I told him he was bad.
What?
I said Santa Claus was there and I told him the mayor had been bad.
I'll have you know, in my closet is a Santa Claus outfit that I'm going to have to wear this year.
But yeah, that's all I had, so.
Commissioner Gleason.
Yes, not necessarily in chronological order. I attended this month's Seguassa meeting, one with a young lady who is in our audience this evening, one of the two people that go to Seguassa meetings. I attended the Songs of America concert at our high school, it was magnificent and I was fortunate enough to have an orange blanket long enough to get enough tickets to win a magnificent American flag crocheted, I guess you would call it a quilt, which I'm going to donate to the Veterans Breakfast as a door prize. Then the Crime Stoppers Banquet, which was very well attended by Creedmoor and our police department. Attended the veteran, county veterans parade in Oxford yesterday. I hear there's a few less buildings on that street than were there yesterday, one of the march parade, sadly. And thank Angie for all you've done and what you're still doing and doing it while we're waiting. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Kaczynski.
Um, I have attended Seguassa meeting and Scott Troyer has been unavailable for the last forty-eight hours, maybe three days. His phone died, so we can't reach him by cellphone right now. But I have been advised that the next Seguassa meeting will be conducted by the vice chair, not the chair, because the chair will not be in attendance. So I might need a crash course from the mayor or the Mayor Pro Tem on how to do all that. I have joined the pickleball team of Creedmoor and I am so excited. If you haven't played pickleball, you have nothing. This is so much fun and it is so addictive. It is just a wonderful time and meeting people on that level and playing with them, it's very, very nice. People from Butner, people from, I understand the Butner Pickleball Team is coming to Creedmoor to challenge the Creedmoor Pickleball Team on Wednesday, on Wednesday morning. Thank you, Angie, for stepping up and taking over in the absence of a director, I appreciate it. I know it's not something you wanted, but we do want you, so just so that you know that. Working very hard on the Veterans Breakfast with Angie a lot and our Christmas float. The commissioners are going to have a Christmas float this year. So Steve and the city manager have worked real hard on getting this trailer ready to do, to be our float. It was a brainchild of Commissioner Albright's that we would do it. And the cheapest way I can think we could decorate it is if every commissioner brings a wrapped box for gifts and we can decorate it that way. We're going to set a date and a time for us all to get together and decorate it. Angie's not doing this for us. I'm not doing it for us. We are all going to do it, we're all going to participate and we want the staff to ride on it with us. Kevin, you're more than welcome to come join us if you want, you can bring your daughter if you'd like. We have been told there's no standing on the float, so we don't have to worry about that. And I hope that we have a great attendance at our Veterans Breakfast this year. Several people have stepped up. City Tavern has stepped up with money and waitstaff to serve at the Veterans Breakfast. And we all have a bugler coming in from Tennessee. I'm really excited about this, so I'm hoping that it will be a great event and we will honor our veterans the way we should. That's all I got.
Commissioner Way.
Yes, sir. National Night Out was well-attended this year. Perfect evening for it, great. I think Chief Willis got some heartburn from his donut competition. Crime Stoppers Banquet was great, was well-attended, members of this board, also the police department had a great turnout for that, it was a good time. We had one of our community cookouts for, our actual HOA did it in Davenport, we invited the city, the police department came and showed up. I greatly appreciate Chief Willis for running my son, my five-year-old Colton, all around playing basketball. He slept great that evening. Commissioner Kaczynski was out there dancing with the staff, having a good time with the DJ, so it was also another beautiful day to have an outpouring of support there. And the, of course, my Seguassa meeting was attended as well.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Wilkins.
Yes, sir. On Wednesday, October eleventh, I attended the Veterans Organization meeting where all five members were present, along with myself, Commissioner Kaczynski. I want to thank Commissioner Kaczynski and Angie for all the work they're doing for the Veterans Breakfast on the eleventh. On October twenty-fourth, I attended the Crime Stoppers Banquet at Pleasant Grove Baptist Church. On Thursday, October twenty-sixth, I met with John Zabarnik, the owner of the city tavern, received a donation for the Veterans Association. On Thursday, November second, I attended the South Granville Chorus Musical Songs of America at the South Granville High School. It was a wonderful concert. Angie, thank you again for all that you do. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, sir. Thank you very much. Mayor's report, Songs of America, I want to appreciate Mr. Gleason for his donation. Thank God he has long fingers. I attended the Crime Stoppers Banquet, I, Mr. Wilkins and myself are on their board of directors and far best contribute as much as we can, attended the Veterans Parade in Oxford and National Night Out. And I believe that's all I have. Is there anything else needs to come before the board? Is there anything else needs to come before the board? We don't, you don't want to go to close session, do you?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Commissioner Gleason's made the motion to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries, we are adjourned.
George, I didn't mean you could, it's just you didn't, you don't, you didn't need to, because it's already been taken care of.
I just received a check. Okay.
All right.
I wish he had have known that, he could have given it.
God, that man, just, you know, he's like, he's got a little money in on that line.